Jason, Ashley and Chris. I'm sure there's some...
That's problem. Weather, ice. I was... Well, you hear one day that they're opening up a deal with Japan, China's gonna buy soybeans, and it had an effect on the prices. And a positive movement. And a positive view of the prices.
They're moving our future.
Well, I asked... Oh, a lot of problems. And should be. We have Russian something close enough. Then usually there's good beans coming from the rivers. It's where Glenn picks these beans together. They have those. They have them.
They have future written all over them.
I don't think a lot of people realize now the farm economy is... ...a country.
Take it big with the kids.
Understood, understood.
Morning, everyone. Welcome to the LSU Board of Supervisors meeting. The meeting will now come to order. Ms. Griffin, can you please call the vote?
Sir, Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Werner?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armiter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shatteland?
Mr. Damp?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. We will now have the invocation by Ryan Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman, for the invocation.
If you'd like to bow your heads. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for bringing everybody together with their various talents and abilities. We ask that you be with these men and women as they guide the future of our state through policy and decision. We ask that you be with our undergraduates and students across the LSU system, especially as we enter this time of final examinations. And we ask that you be especially with our seniors as we make our first steps in our transition from campus into the professional world. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us every day. Amen.
Everyone remain standing. We will now have the pledge allegiance by Ms. Messina's, Mrs. Messina's first grade class from University Laboratory School. I think that's the best pledge of allegiance we've ever had. Everyone, please be seated. Dr. Westbrook, if you could give us a brief comments about the laboratory school?
Good morning. I'm Amy Barm Westbrook. I'm the interim superintendent at University Lab School, and I could talk for at least an hour or a day about the lab school, but I've been given about sixty seconds. So, I just want to start with thanking you for what you do, for all the students, not only at the lab school, but in colleges and universities across the state. As you may know, the lab school is a unit in the College of Education. It is a K-12 configuration. There are 1,426 students. We anticipate graduating 117 seniors. We are an A-ranked school, third in the state behind two academic magnets. We do not screen for giftedness. I want to point that out. Our students are extremely high achieving. The average ACT is a 25.6. We know that's going up this year because we have several 35s. We also have a 36 on the ACT so far. Our seniors graduate with an average of 24 college hours, and the average scholarship that a senior class receives is fifteen million dollars. We are also a national Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, and we hope to be the first public school in the state of Louisiana to be STEM accredited in October. We have 112 faculty members. To be an instructor, one must have at least a master's degree, so we have ninety-seven with a master's degree and eight with a PhD. There's a lot more that I want to share with you, and I hope to do that when you come over for the tour at noon. I want you to know we have a serious case of senioritis. There's an annual prank. I was tipped off at about 6:30 this morning that they, the seniors, have planned a water balloon fight in the courtyard. We think we have that postponed, but we're not sure. It's always fun. We can't wait to see you at the lab school later today. Again, thank you so much for what you do and for honoring us by having our children say the pledge this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisors, we are very honored today to have the governor of the great state of Louisiana, John Bell Edwards, with us. Governor, would you like to make a few comments, please?
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of you for being here for your service to the state, to this university, to the entire system. It's a joy to join you today, and I want to thank Dr. Westbrook, somebody I've known for many years, and she's been committed to the state and its children in terms of K-12 education for a long time, and I don't know that anybody is better than Dr. Amy Westbrook at what she does. You know, we had the first grade students who led the pledge this morning, and that's what should inspire all of us, is when we see those students and know that we have students just like that all over the state of Louisiana, and we want to make sure that they have every opportunity for success here. More opportunity, more prosperity here in Louisiana. And she's talking about the lab school. That happens to be where my son goes to school right now. He's in the 11th grade, so he wouldn't be responsible for the water balloon fight. He might be responsible for something else over there, I'm not sure. But you know, a little over a year ago, I took him to my alma mater for undergraduate and to West Point, and we spent two days, and I made sure that he had a tour of the barracks where I live, the mess hall, the academic buildings, the museum. We met with superintendent, we met with the admissions people. But the truth is, West Point in two days can't compete with LSU where he's going to high school, and so he's told me he's gonna go to LSU, and I couldn't be happier for him. And LSU is the only institution of higher education in Louisiana that I have attended, and it was law school. And so I have to tell you, I'm a little late coming to the board of supervisors meeting because I've been intending to do this for a long time, and I've actually attended the board of supervisors meeting for all the other systems in Louisiana. And this is an exciting time about what you have going on. I know that you had the launch of Fierce for the Future fundraising campaign, the largest ever undertaken in the state of Louisiana, and I wish you nothing but luck on that. Dr. Jenks Bruceard named the National Teacher of the Year for her pioneering work in the LSU Manship School of Mass Communication. By the way, I have a daughter who's over there. I think she's a senior. But... Dr. Gabriella Gonzalez, SEC Professor of the Year for outstanding body of work in physics and astronomy, and of course, it was her work in conjunction with others out at Ligo that landed the Nobel Prize, and that's something you don't see every day. I mean, that's extraordinary. And I also want to talk about Dr. Jim Richardson, who has been here at LSU for forty years. For thirty-two years, he has served on the revenue estimating conference for the state of Louisiana. He is nationally recognized as an expert economist. He has worked in Alabama, he's worked in Kansas, but most importantly, he's worked here in Louisiana, and he's done a great job. In fact, I will be hosting his colloquium for lunch today. So today is LSU day for me. I gotta figure out what I can do in the afternoon to continue that. I know that you're gonna have a tremendous graduating class here soon, and you're looking for even better things out of the class that will be enrolled in the fall, in terms of the size of the class, the diversity of the class, the quality of the class, so I want to thank you for all of that. And to top it all off, Devin White was picking number five last night. And the good news is, I suspect, is we're gonna see him at least twice a year play the Saints, because he's going to Tampa Bay, and so that may test some of your loyalties. I'll be a Saints fan, but I'll be a Devin White fan. I want him to have the best game ever, and they just lose by one, maybe, every time. I'm also proud to say that we've done tremendous work in the state of Louisiana with your help in order to finally stabilize our budget, replace deficits with surplus. We have fully stabilized higher education each of the last three years, and if you go back, well, the last two years, and the budget this year does it again, that 2016 budget cycle was extremely tough with that $2 billion deficit, but we still came that close to fully stabilizing higher ed even in that year. And so I'm excited about what we've been able to do. We've also, we're making sure that we're fully funding our obligations to kids on TOPPS, and need-based aid for higher education is funded at the highest level in the state's history. For the first time in over a decade, the budget proposal I submitted to the legislature actually has a net new investment of general fund in higher education. And so we are turning the corner. Still a long way to go. We're more resource constrained than we might want to be, but we're in a much better place, and you all are doing a tremendous job of making sure that we're moving forward as it relates to LSU. You know, stabilizing the budget wasn't easy, but through hard work, partnership, bipartisanship, we were able to get the job done, and you all were very helpful in that effort, and I want to sincerely thank you for that. We could not have made the progress we've made as a state had we not invested in higher education. And I just want you to think about what had happened over the previous eight years or so, when we disinvested in higher education more than any other state in the nation. We raised tuition more than any other state in the nation. We were exactly on the wrong path towards, you know, if we want to encourage investment in our state, if we want to promote opportunity and prosperity for our young people. We have to do that in concert with supporting all of higher ed, not just LSU, but all of higher ed from our community technical college system to our four-year universities up to postgraduate work, and by the way, we have to do a better job of getting college offerings in high school through dual enrollment and other opportunities if we want to do everything that we can in Louisiana to promote that opportunity and prosperity. And this is why, when CEOs and people make an investment decisions, and sometimes they're in state, sometimes they're out of state, sometimes they're from around the world, when they talk about coming to Louisiana to make that investment, they want to know that they're gonna be successful, and they literally never ask me about our taxes because they know we're the fifth lowest tax in the country. They don't ask me about the litigation climate. Even if they're going down to New Orleans, they don't ask me about the levies. You know what they ask me about? Are we gonna have the human talent we need to be successful? Will our employees have the requisite knowledge and skills and the education to be successful? That's what they want to know. And that's why I know that if it weren't for stabilizing higher education, we would not have announced 128 major economic development projects that we've announced since I've been governor. Our GDP wouldn't be the largest in the state's history. Personal income wouldn't be the largest in the state's history. We wouldn't have a 3.9% unemployment rate on the seasonally unadjusted number, the lowest in well over a decade. So we're doing something right, and you all have been tremendous partners in helping to get that done, and I want to thank you, and I want to ask for your continued commitment, and I'm gonna give you mine, that this is the path we're gonna stay on, and we're gonna do more. And the question for us isn't whether we're doing better than we were a few years ago, because we are. The question is, are we doing as well as we need to do relative to the other states that we're competing against? And so we know that we have challenges there because our per pupil expenditures, our per pupil investment here is among the lowest in the country. And so we all should aspire to do better, not just to spend more money, but to make proper strategic investments that will yield dividends and returns for generations to come. That's what we need to be about. I also want to make sure that I'm partnering with you all as it relates to your physical plans, all across the system, whether it's the Health Science Center in New Orleans with the old interim hospital, whether it's the new facility that you're looking for in Freeport, both of which are in the capital outlay, oh, by the way, Dr. O'Yay and Dr. Golly, but all across the system, here in Baton Rouge, the Long Field House, twenty-five million dollars in capital outlay for the Long Field House, the old engineering shops where we need to make sure that we can have a suitable environment for teaching the arts. There's fifteen point three million dollars total for that, and by the way, two million of that is a generous contribution, I believe, from Mr. Ogden.
Exactly.
And we should always recognize generosity when we benefit from it and when our students benefit from it, so I want to thank Roger Ogden for that. We have more money statewide for deferred magnets, both for state-owned buildings and on college campuses. One of the things we're gonna try to focus on is a lot of times when we have money, we build something new. We never tear down the old building, we just abandon it. On a college campus, we'll just, so we are gonna do more to take down some of these old buildings across the state on college campuses. We have, just out of our supplemental budget, which by the way, you don't have a supplemental budget if you don't have extra revenue. If you're not running surpluses, you don't have one, but there's fifteen million dollars cash that we're gonna have to supplement what we do through capital outlay with respect to deferred maintenance and taking some of these old buildings down and getting rid of them to improve the, not just the appearance, but these are safety problems, you know, and so forth. So we're working hard to do what we can. We certainly are doing better. You know, it's an election year, so over at the state Capitol, we have some things going on, but at the end of the day, I can tell you, it's a heck of a lot better this year than it was the previous three, because we do have that stability, and we have it for years to come because of that bipartisan work we were able to do. So I just want to thank you for what you're doing, and I want to challenge you to keep doing better. And I know that you know you're stewards of taxpayer dollars, and you're involved in education, and you're involved in the young people of Louisiana. Well, let me tell you, if there's three things people are passionate about in Louisiana, it's their children, their tax dollars and education, and that's why people follow you in the grocery store. That's why they catch you when you're coming out of church. That's why they call you on the weekends. You know, I know you thought this was gonna be a part-time gig, but because they're passionate about it. And guess what? They're passionate about the sports, too. And anyway, I'm excited about all of that. The spring game is over, we're looking forward to this fall, and you know, I had an opportunity to visit with the governor of Texas on the way out of the White House at the Black Tide Center this year, and he brought it up to me, but he told me he was looking forward to LSU coming to Austin this year so they could send us back with a whipping. Well, that is not going to happen. That is not going to happen, because the next time I see him after that, I want to make sure that I get the best of that particular conversation. Look, I want to thank you again for partnering with me, for doing everything that you're doing, and not just the board, but for all of the chancellors, everybody who's involved in delivering higher education at LSU here in Baton Rouge and around the state. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my prepared remarks, but I don't know whether it was in the plan today for you all to ask questions. I'm happy to stay for questions, or I can leave and let you go on about your business, whatever you want to do.
Thank you, Governor. I do want to say on behalf of all of us, on behalf of the LSU Board of Supervisors, we want to thank you. Through your leadership, the state has put the days of cataclysmic deficits and budget reductions way behind us and replaced them with stability and reinvestment. Even during the dark times, Governor, you were instrumental in helping us stabilize funding to our campuses. We secured a new partner for LSU, Shreveport, through your efforts, preserved agricultural extension functions that were in jeopardy, fully funded TOPPS for our students, and you bring us to the table on all sorts of economic development projects, and you've made long-term commitments to our much-needed capital development. The Long Field House, the food incubator in Baton Rouge, the drainage in Alexandria, the roof repairs in Eunice, I mean, you've just demonstrated so many times that you are supportive of our mission of teaching, researching, and service, and I want you to know, as you've seen, the university under the leadership of Dr. Alexander has been a very good steward of your support. Under Dr. Alexander's leadership, we've grown to new heights, we've reached new levels, and our students are performing better than before, winning national awards, doing great work. And so, Governor, thank you for taking the time to come see us today. Thank you for your support, and we promise we won't let you down.
Thank you. And James, I did mean to make this comment because you're gonna graduate the most diverse group of graduates in the state's, in LSU's history next month, but I'm also looking at the most diverse board of supervisors for LSU in the history of the state of Louisiana. And I'm excited because the board looks like the state of Louisiana, and I want to thank you for your work, for your contributions, and the quality effort that you all put in. So, thank you so much. God bless you.
Obviously, that's because of you, Governor, so thank you for your vision.
Thank you. God bless you.
Okay, well, now we'll hear comments from Mr. Ryan Hoffman, the student who gave us our invocation.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name's Ryan Hoffman, and I'm one of the undergraduate students graduating this year from LSU. This morning, you heard from myself and some of my fellow students who have had the fortunate opportunity to participate in research here at LSU with some of the amazing faculty. So I wanted to take a moment to tell you a bit about the undergraduate research experience here at LSU, the past, the present, and the future. The past. LSU has a longstanding history of being a leader in groundbreaking research led by internationally recognized faculty, and with support of the university, students can get involved in this research from day one. One of my first experiences on this campus was joining the lab of Dr. Fernando Galvez, where I study the effects of low oxygen on fish. I speak from... I speak from personal experience when I say that this research has kept me from feeling quite literally like a fish out of water, or a very small fish in a very big pond during my time here. It gave me a home on campus. It sparked my interest and fueled my motivation, as I'm sure it's done for many of my fellow students. And it's helped me grow so much. With support from LSU, I was able to attend conferences, network with professionals in my field, and reach my goal of securing a spot in the LSU Health Science Center, New Orleans, next year's medical class. This is because research teaches us concepts that we can't always learn in the lecture hall, concepts about collaboration and teamwork, about networking and communicating across the curriculum, about persevering in pursuit of a goal, and communicating findings to both the scientific community and beyond. The present. This year, LSU put on its first-ever undergraduate research week. This week featured events all across campus at various venues, highlighting the scholarly works of undergraduate students from every college. I want to thank Dr. Matthew Lee, Sarah Firstill, and everyone at LSU Discover's office who helped put on this event, and tell you that this year's LSU Discover Day, our annual undergraduate research symposium, was the largest yet. It featured presentations from over 340 students showcasing their work in the forms of posters, oral presentations, artwork, visual displays, and performances. This event was attended by over 800 visitors, including other students and faculty, and more than a few proud parents. To date, this has been the largest single event encouraging and promoting undergraduate research on this campus. And finally, the future. LSU recently announced its Fierce for the Future campaign. As President F. King Alexander put it, "This is an effort to fuel the engine of progress across Louisiana and around the world." One of the six central pillars of this campaign is research and economic development. And I can assure you that by continuing to support and recognize undergraduate research, we can help realize our strategic plan of leading Louisiana and impacting the world. Thank you so much for having me today. Have a blessed day, and go Tigers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoffman. At this time, we will recess the board meeting and move directly into committee meetings. The first committee will be Academic Affairs. Mr. Anderson, can you please convene the Academic Affairs Committee meeting?
Yes, I can. I'd like to call Academic Affairs Committee to order. Ms. Griffin, would you call row, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Armater?
Here.
Mr. Shadowland? Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Dr. Haney, if you would, to give the items for consideration.
Yes, so the first item for consideration is a request from LSU Shreveport to divide the College of Business Education and Human Development into two colleges. You may recall that the initial merger of these units was a function of the budget challenges on the campus. They are in a much better position financially, and there has been very robust growth in this unit. And as a result, through Chancellor Clark's leadership and through very thorough input from the university, they are seeking to divide these colleges to ensure that there is sufficient oversight of each, especially given the very rapid growth of their online MBA program. There are also accreditation issues where there are multiples of those in both of those colleges. So this will allow them an opportunity to provide the leadership and stability that will benefit these units. And I don't know, Chancellor Clark, if you want to say just a little bit about it?
I think perhaps it'd be useful for you knowing about process. And this was pretty amazing that we had six meetings within the divisions in the college overall. We had an open campus meeting. We had, on our planning console, we have the president of the Student Government Association, the president of the Staff Association, we have the president of the Faculty Senate. And the Faculty Senate, the staff, and the SGA all are in favor of it, all voted. We had unanimous votes. We had 75 people there in the room when the planning council voted. It was unanimous. We didn't have a single objector of 75 people in the room. I was a little nervous when I saw so many there that were beyond the planning council members. So it has completely the support of the university. It has the student support, the staff support, the faculty support, and the planning council 100% vote on this. And it was just, again, the merger occurred because of the fact of how we went from being with $18.4 million down to $7 million of state appropriation. The dean suites are still there. It's used for other things. There's no need to have to do anything to do it. We can just put it right back into place again. And the only cost that we have on it is around $100,000 total cost to put it back into place with the personnel on it. So it's something that we need to do. We can't have one person being the dean who's a business dean background. We need to be in the schools. We need to be in the healthy communities, and it's just, one dean can't do all those things. We need to be a part about the urban metropolitan role of the schools there with a dean more appropriately in that area. And so that's one of the things that drives this. Thank you.
Any questions, any discussion? All right, I need a motion to approve that request.
So moved.
Got a motion, second?
Thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, so moved. Octane, would you cover our next item?
Yes, this is also from LSU Shreveport. SAC CIC requires that every institution have a mission statement, and that mission statement should be revised on a regular basis. Shreveport has done that, and to their credit, condensed and focused their mission statement. I think that's quite an accomplishment for academic individuals to be concise. And so they are putting this mission statement before you as well for your approval. And again, Chancellor Clark?
Again, it's aligned with the LSU strategic plan, and our LSU strategic plan falls directly underneath that. So in terms of what we're doing as a university, we're fully aligned with the LSU strategic plan, which drives what we do. The process here, again, involved the campus in a similar way. And again, we had a unanimous vote of the planning council. It did reflect, again, the vote of the SGA president, the Faculty Senate president, the Staff Senate president, all said that they voted for it on behalf of their constituencies. And so it had, and it also involved our alumni, it involved external stakeholders, including the Treeport Chamber. It involved our LSU Foundation putting input with us.
Okay, anybody have any questions? We need a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second?
Thank you.
Second? Any further discussion? Any objection? Hearing none, so moved. Dr. Haney, would you handle the next one?
Yes, so the third item before you is a request from the LSU A&amp;M campus to establish a doctor of philosophy in industrial engineering. Currently, industrial engineering students who wish to pursue a PhD do so through an interdisciplinary engineering science PhD. For those students, the preference would be to actually have a degree in industrial engineering. By establishing this degree, it will allow us to attract higher-quality students. We have amazing students who are doing this now, but we can directly recruit students who are interested in the PhD in engineering, which is also beneficial for those individuals either going into industry or who are also interested in working with research groups or directly in academia. It will allow us to compete more directly for research dollars, having this degree. And it's also the only unit with the advent of the PhD in construction management in the college that will not have a PhD in industrial engineering. Currently, there are 15 students in engineering science who have this concentration, so we believe there's robust demand that will only increase once we have the PhD in place directly supporting an industrial engineering track. So we put that.
But it remains the same interdisciplinary?
That program will remain, the interdisciplinary program will remain, which is often a space for students who have multiple interests to pursue. The industrial engineering will be its separate PhD.
Any other questions? We need a motion to approve that request? Got a motion, second? Got a second? Any objection? Hearing none, so moved. Dr. Haney, would you handle the consent agenda items?
Yes, there are a number of items before you on the consent agenda. These deal with conditional approvals for a Center for Tissue Engineering and Regenerative Medicine, as well as an additional one-year approval for a Center of Evidence-Based Practices in Behavioral Health. There's items on there to increase curriculum hours, as well as a name change for a degree program. Both of those are to align with industry and best practices across that discipline, those disciplines. Also, a scholarship and a name change on a laboratory, and most critically for us, your approval of the conferral dates for commencement exercises so our students are able to get their degrees.
Okay. You all had those items to look at. Any questions? All right, we need a motion to approve?
I move for the spring 2009.
No way, you ought to postpone it for six, eight months.
We're not postponing.
Okay. We got a motion to approve those items, a second?
Second.
Got a second? Any objection? All right, those will be approved. Now, we need to have a motion to conclude the activities of the academic. Got a motion and a second to conclude that? No objection? So moved. Dr. Haney, thank you for your help with all of that. You did a great job. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our academic committee.
Thank you very much. Mr. Woods, would you please convene the Property and Facilities Committee?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone. Ms. Griffin, please call the row.
Sir, Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shadowland? Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Mr. Mallett? Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I ask Mr. Dan Lizell to present the items for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, members of the board. The first item is an overview of public-private partnerships at the university and how they've been used at LSU over the past several years. It's very pertinent, as you will actually be considering such a project later in this committee meeting. On a national level, public-private partnerships, which is basically, in a nutshell, a university partners with an outside private entity for the purpose of facilitating real estate or facility development on the campus, or any other public entity. I can do that as well with a private entity, but this will focus on university P3 projects. For a lot of reasons, public-private partnerships are becoming a predominant method used to provide on-campus student housing, and we'll touch on some of those reasons going forward. They're also being used in broader government infrastructure projects. A good example of that would be, of course, the charity, the old charity redevelopment project, which you approved and moving forward with in January. Just by way of comparison, the most recent year's data showed that there were 25 on-campus housing deals closed in 2017 with an average value of about $87 million. So the reasons for using this method versus the traditional method by which state entities or public universities have traditionally done housing projects and other facilities projects, it significantly accelerates, the number one reason is it significantly accelerates the project time to completion versus the traditional state process, which in the end has the benefit of reducing the overall interest rate and construction cost risk. And I'll give you a tangible example of that. The Nicholson Gateway Project, which has been extraordinarily successful at this university, actually began in 2016 in the middle of the floods. Began on time without a hitch, continued through the next summer where Hurricane Harvey came through and decimated the Houston area. And as a result of that, a number, it created a significant increase in building prices and building supply shortages. Had we, again, continued through and opened on time this past summer, had we used the traditional state process, we would not have even had a shovel in the dirt by the time Hurricane Harvey had come through. So we would have been facing some significant delays and also price increase. It also allows for the use of design-build and construction manager at risk arrangements that reduce costs. Traditionally, in a state process, you have to hire both a designer and a contractor, which creates sometimes conflict between both. And so this allows you to hire a one-point of contact to manage both of those processes. Allows you to bring together multiple stakeholders to accelerate the process, and it does transfer some risk in terms of, as I mentioned, being able to ensure that the buildings get finished in time and under budget to the private sector. General overview of, this next slide provides a general overview of the P3 process that we've used here at LSU. It was established for Nicholson Gateway, which, again, at the time, was the largest student housing project in the country, but it also builds on the process that TAF had used for the past several years with regard to many of their athletics projects. The first step is the, you, the board, approve or brought forward an intent-to-lease agreement with the LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation, which was created a few years back to help facilitate these kinds of projects, not just at this campus, but across the system. And then, following that, under the intent-to-lease, the Real Estate Foundation will create a project management committee, which includes university representation. They engage a project advisor for market analysis and project management, and I'll talk a little bit more about that process in a couple slides. They create, they conduct a competitive selection process to ensure transparency. They negotiate the final deal terms, and then, once we get to the point where the deal has been confected, it's brought back to, brought back to the board for your final consideration and approval. The process, the benefits, again, some of the benefits of this process is that this gives the project credibility with the private sector, and it encourages very competitive bids from the private sector because they know we're being very serious about this endeavor. It allows us to participate, but it keeps the process private. And the project management committee structure, which has been very effective here in terms of including and ensuring LSU representation, allows us to bring together the public sector viewpoint with, again, the expertise of the private sector. Again, we are protected in this process in that we are not fully committed to the deal until all the terms have been negotiated and approved by the board. And it also protects the foundation in that they, if in fact a project does not move forward, their costs are reimbursed. I talked a little while ago about the planning process, and this is where we, why we bring in a project advisor, why it's so important. Because, again, these are very, this is a fairly new structure, and again, something that's of tangible importance to the university, it really, these kinds of projects increase rather than reduce our need to conduct a very comprehensive planning process to ensure that the project is ultimately viable. Even where we don't have legal liability on the bonds, our credit rating is still considered. When the credit rating agencies come in, they do consider these projects, whether or not we are legally liable for paying off the bond issuances. They also, from a reputational standpoint, if they're poorly managed and end up with a very low-quality project or a financially, a project that is not financially viable for the long term, it creates a significant reputational risk for the university. And as a result, it does require some significant upfront investment, but it is a modest investment when you look at what the potential financial liabilities are should we go forward with a less-than-adequate project. The bond market treatment, again, just to touch a little bit on that, they do, as I mentioned, the bond markets do consider P3 projects when they're evaluating our overall bond rating, and they do consider our own rating when they're rating the. bond rating, and they do consider our own rating when they're rating the projects. So there is some, again, some interrelationship there. Typically, where LSU guarantees repayment of the debt, as we did with the Nicholson Gateway, the project will be rated one notch below LSU's own credit rating for other similar projects. And that's very similar across the country when you look at these kinds of projects relative to the university, the home university's overall rating. If we do not guarantee these projects or have no guarantee, they tend to have lower credit ratings, again, because they become somewhat more risky in the eyes of investors. And so those are factors that need to be considered when we're working through the terms of the deal. Just briefly, as touched on earlier, there are, P3 does work for other kinds of projects other than student housing. As I, I talked about at the beginning, the charity redevelopment project down in New Orleans is a prime example of a non-housing-related project. Basically, any project that can have an identified revenue stream can be accomplished through the P3 model, and certainly, we've begun exploring whether or not there are some opportunities for us on the campus, on all of our campuses, for academic building, construction and renewal through this process. It makes it easy for us to bring in donor contributions, to reduce the overall project cost, and, again, reduce the overall debt service down the road. So, again, this is, it's a very flexible mechanism. It's one that we've had some success in. Nicholson Gateway, again, has been, which was our first very large P3 project on this campus, has been a success. We are, right now, looking at 93% or 94% occupancy for next fall, and those numbers, we're expecting them to continue. It's been wildly popular with students. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And Dan, the projection was if we get over 80%, we're in good shape, or 78%?
Yeah, it was about 70%.
About 70%. So we're well above
Yes.
the minimum projection that
And we were about 80% last year, which was what we had projected.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Tony Lombardo.
Thank you, Mr. Woods, members of the board. Item two is a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve expansion of the Emerge Center at LSU Innovation Park. This request would allow the president to execute a First Amendment to Ground Lease and Construction Agreement with the Baton Rouge Speech and Hearing Foundation to construct a charter school and related parking at LSU Innovation Park. Additionally, authorizes the president to execute related agreements as may be reasonable necessary to facilitate the project and to include in such leases and other agreements such terms and conditions as he seems to be in the best interest of LSU. Finally, the board's approval for the schematic design of the proposed building are sought and are in general compliance with the campus design guidelines as they apply to LSU Innovation Park, and the design is a continuous design as this is in addition to the existing building.
As always, the background information on items on today's agenda is included in your board package, but if there are any questions on this item, I will take them Is there a motion to approve the request as presented?
I also move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Stone. A second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Brown. Are there any objections? No objections, it's approved. Next item, Mr. Lombardo.
Item three is a request from LSU A&amp;M to purchase property on West Roosevelt Street. There are three vacant lots totaling approximately 10,000 square feet fronting on West Roosevelt Street adjacent to the campus. The seller is willing to sell the lots to LSU for their appraised market value of $25,000. These lots allow us to position ourselves within the community and have a voice in development on our campus edges and is consistent with the campus periphery project in which you have allowed LSU Real Estate and Facilities Foundation to purchase properties on our That is from March of 2018. This one, we did not need to utilize the Real Estate and Facilities Foundation since we were in direct negotiations with the seller and did not have to compete in the open market.
Okay, are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the request as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second.
Jimmy, can I just ask one question?
Yes, sir.
While Tony's up there. How much north of the North Gate where there with Chimes is?
I'm sorry?
North of the North Gate where Chimes intersects with Highland. How much property do we actually have on the north side of that that we've acquired outside of the traditional boundaries of campus?
This will be the third piece. The first was a property swap with a property on the Innovation Park campus, and that's inclusive of frontage on both Chimes and State Street. That was the first piece. That's just under an acre. It's a fairly prominent corner and position.
It's where the old
Well, we're currently using it for parking. The second piece was a rental unit on West Roosevelt at the far end of the street, so now we have two pieces of property or will have two pieces of property on Roosevelt at either ends of the street between Alaska and Highland Road.
Thank you.
Okay, the item is passed unanimously. Item number four, please.
Item number four is a request from LSU A&amp;M to authorize the president to execute agreements for the development of the Greenhouse District, which is Phase Three of the Nicholson Gateway Project. We have Kim Martin with Brailsford &amp; Dunleavy, our program manager, who will present some additional details on this item.
Let's see if this clicker works. Okay, wonderful. Before I go into the details of the Greenhouse District project, which is Phase Three of the Nicholson Gateway Project, I want to provide another layer of additional context, just piggybacking on the information Dan described a few minutes ago about the original P3 structure for Nicholson Gateway. The same lease agreement and deal structure remains in place for the additional phases, both Phase Two, which is underway, and Phase Three, which we're talking about today. In addition, the project documents that we've circulated in your packets, the legal agreements, they actually have been updated since they were circulated to you. We have incorporated the standard language for LSU's Supplier Diversity Initiative since you've received those documents. So now, the third phase of the Nicholson Gateway Project, which is affectionately called GDP3, greenhouse, this is actually the housing that we're going to place on the Greenhouse District, is the location on the map above you on the screen in your packet, and this is actually on the east portion of campus adjacent to the new UREC. Provide a little project summary. Total project cost for this third phase is $80.1 million, scheduled to be opening in the fall of 2021. Total square footage of approximately 250 gross square feet, including 881 beds. They're suite-style beds for students. The project costs also include site infrastructure of the greenhouse site, landscaping, parking, site furnishings, and we have an alternate pedestrian bridge in the project as well. For some additional context, just wanted to provide a brief update on the entire Nicholson Gateway Project. As you are aware, on the initial inception and approval of this project, this is to initiate the modernization of all of the housing on campus, both replacement and renovation. But the progress to date is the first phase, which is Nicholson Gateway and Spruce Hall, opened this past fall on campus. The second phase is underway. Cedar Hall is under construction, scheduled for on-time delivery for this summer. We've also renovated Evangelion Hall, and Highland Hall is under renovation, and then we have prepped the greenhouse site itself for this third phase. And then we've but begun design for Phase Three, which we're talking about today. In your packet, we have a matrix which has a lot of data in it for all three of the phases, including projected openings or past openings for completed projects, total bed counts of each of the projects, and total project costs. I just wanted to note to you that the careful planning has gone into this third phase to really track it with your current enrollment projections, the largest freshman class that you had last fall. And so we've sized the third phase to stay on track so you could accommodate 80% to 85% of your incoming freshmen as that class has grown in recent years. There will need to be an additional Phase Four, and we're tracking that closely with enrollment projections. In addition, there are some 1916s buildings, five residence halls in particular, that will need to come down, and so at a later time, a later board meeting will have that information and that cost information. And then I also wanted to point out, as you look into detail into this cost matrix, the costs per bed vary per project just due to the different years they were implemented, and some of the sites have different varying levels of infrastructure and parking that were needed. Next, the economics. So the chart before you is an illustration of the cumulative cash flow of the entire housing system. So that's all the existing residence halls and apartments on campus, and it includes Phase One, Phase Two, and this proposed Phase Three. And, of course, the goal of this project is to invigorate and refresh student life, residential life on campus, and not to necessarily create new revenues, but we have to maintain financial stability within the housing system. I want to point out that in the early years, when Phase Three comes online, there's, the pro forma is in the red for five years, from '21 to '25, to a total of about $3.5 million. LSU has several ways in place to make up for this shortfall, including, we've used conservative occupancy, 95% and 93% occupancy for our revenue projections. At this point, lease-up for next fall is on target to exceed that. We also have reserves in the housing system, not baked into this annual operating pro forma that exceed that amount. We don't want to deplete that entire fund, but that is an opportunity for one of the ways to cover that shortfall. In addition, we have a project contingency for GDP Phase Three of $2.8 million. And as Dan was attributing the success of the first phase Nicholson Gateway, just want to remind you that at the end of the day, when Gateway opened in the fall, we had an extra $1.5 million of occupancy because that's how we manage the budget. So there's opportunity to reduce the debt service, annual debt service, at the end of the day, if contingency exists. And finally, we're using conservative financing assumptions. So right now, for example, we're carrying a 4.6 interest rate. We've got about 50 basis point cushion based on our underwriter's advice until we get to closing, which would be this upcoming fall. And then one other thing I want to point out, as you look at this illustration, it models the 40-year pro forma because we're financing on a 40-year term, and it shows a value of revenues exceeding $700 million in 2060. I just want to point out, this is actually not real numbers when we think about, we have to come back, take additional halls offline, build a Phase Four. So those aren't real dollars, but this is just illustrating the impact of Phase Three. And finally, it's just the timeline. We're asking your approval for this Phase Three today, and then we'll move forward with Board of Regents and state approval this summer, and then leading into a final guaranteed maximum price in September, closing in September, and break ground in October of this year. So next, I want to introduce Dale McLean with Now's Bull and Architects. He's going to describe the design of the site.
Could I just, yeah, I'm sorry, just comment real quickly on the importance of this greenhouse, this greenhouse Phase Three? Because we, on the, it would be the other side of the greenhouse. We have a Student Recreation Wellness Center that's used by 6,000 people a day, and parking is limited and it's hard to get over to, and this new project allows us to create bike paths, student walking paths, a new pedestrian bridge, and it will absolutely improve the throughput through campus from east to west and west to east because in the past, we went north-south. This one, with the rec center sitting where it does, we have all hours of the day, faculty, staff, and students trying to get to the rec center, getting to the rec center, and then getting back and forth. It creates a brand-new east-west flow to the campus that is in bad need, we know, for students that spend an awful lot of time over in that, in the rec center, whether they're coming from the west side of campus or the north side of campus or the south side of campus.
Absolutely. This is a transformational project on campus, and not only because you need the additional beds to support your enrollment and for your entire housing master plan, but also because it invigorates the east portion of campus. You built this amazing UREC. I'll tell you, I'm on campuses all over the nation, and they talk about LSU's rec center. And it's well-known, but if you're in that portion of campus, there's this site in the middle of it, greenhouse. This is part of the campus master plan to invigorate that and connect it through residential life. Thank you.
Dan, I got to tell you, looking at that chart you had a couple slides before, the net present value calculation of this to LSU, it's not on there, but I'm just running it in my mind looking at that chart, is staggering. I mean, what an accomplishment this is, both from the tangible side for students but also from the financial position that
Absolutely.
helping guide us toward.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. I think President Alexander stole a lot of my thunder. Let's go ahead with it anyway. Project overview, of course. Let's see. Oh, sorry. All right, so here's the overall campus as we identified earlier. This is Phase Three of the development. You can see the Nicholson Gateway Project with its 1,529 beds over to the left. Cedar Hall is to the north, near Astra Street. Phase Three is over in what's called the east campus housing, is identified in the campus master plan. This is an enlargement of that area right here. As you can see, it's identified or bounded by South Campus Drive to the north, Campus Lake Drive to the west, Campus Lake to the south, and South Campus, and, excuse me, the Corporation Canal to the east, and that right across from there is the then where you see the UREC Center that we just talked about a moment ago. This is a visual of the site itself and aerial. As you can see, it's about 14.9 acres there. This is over the bridge looking from the northeast to the southwest over the site. The site itself, we've been working with Steve Waller and other people to really develop the program for this overall development so we can see how it would flesh out on the site itself. We've also been working with the constituent group from the campus master plan to make sure that this is in concert with the campus master plan itself. This is, sorry, this is the overall site plan itself. You have Building A, which is 458 beds to the north. You have Building B, which is 423 beds to the west. It's maintaining the campus master plan objective of putting housing on this part of campus. It's also, number two, as the president identified, providing some of the beginnings of some of those connections from the east-west, really providing a safe and convenient way for students to move from the core of campus across to the UREC Center. And number three, it's also identifying or providing the first phases, the first steps of the greenway, the green elements in that that helps benefit this area as well. Two other things just to point out. In addition to the campus pedestrian ways, we're adding bus stops in this area to supplement that connectivity. We are maintaining a portion of the old headhouse for the greenhouse there that you can see in the northeast corner, northwest corner of the site, and we're maintaining the parking count. There's two additional parking areas in that area as well as part of this first phase. This is an overview. We've got Danny Mahaffey on looking at what this part of the campus should really look like, and we're really using the elements that are part of the overall campus. This is the campus standard brick, the campus standard stucco color, the campus standard clay tile roofs, all of those, so we can really make this feel like it's a part of campus and really bring and tie the campus together. So this is looking from northeast towards the southwest. You can see the apartments, you can see the headhouse there, and then the first two buildings of this phase just beyond. This is looking right across South Campus Drive here. You can see the buildings, they're very large, so we're really trying to break them up, make them very pedestrian-friendly, if you will, because we're expecting a lot of students to be coming by here. You can see the headhouse there on the right-hand side as well. Looking back from the lake, this is from east side of the lake, across the two Looking back from the lake, this is from east side of the lake, across the two adjacent, the buildings that are built there currently, and the two new proposed buildings just beyond. Moving to the west side of the lake, you can see that connection. One of the things that has been part of the master plan is really connecting this whole site back to the lake, so that's one of the things that we'll be developing as the future phases come along. This is down at pedestrian level, along South Campus Drive. You can see the building, the headhouse would be just to your right in this particular image. There is the headhouse along the street, the bus stop there shown underneath the existing live oaks that would be saved in the project as well. Looking back from the buildings, the buildings create sort of a quadrangle, a green quadrangle as part of that greenway concept, as part of the campus plan, so we're trying to make sure we're following that through. Couple other images, just looking at that green quadrangle between the two buildings And then the overall view of the project itself. Thank you very much for your time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Phenomenal. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Moore?
Dan, will this all be a public-private partnership?
Yes.
Every bit of it?
Yes.
And the timeline, do you anticipate?
The, if you go back to the Kim's presentation, the slide, the last slide, you, PowerPoint. Go back to.
Very nice slide.
This gives a kind of a schematic of what the timeline is. It begins with, again, with your consideration approval today, and then we move through to the Board of Regents and the state this summer. We do the closing, financial close in September, and then we are set to begin construction immediately. And then, again, opening Highland Hall in the fall of August 2020, and finishing construction thereafter. And then, during that period of time as well, the plan will be to prepare Kirby Smith for demolition, which will begin with the asbestos abatement, and then the demolition later in that spring.
I think if I'm correct, Phase Three will be finished in fall 2021, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, Brown.
Dan, what about the housing of the students that's displaced by these norms that were removed?
Ask Steve Waller, the Director of Residence Life, to come up and talk about how this is all going to be staged with regard to, with regard to students. We're trying to do it in a way to where there is not displacement during this process.
We have carefully phased and master planned our additional housing, so we do not have to displace anyone in the process. We'll maintain our existing facilities online. As the enrollment grows, or changes, or stabilizes, we'll build a new building, then we will replace the beds in an old building and take it down appropriately as we move through our master plan. So no place will we reduce our housing capacity. We will always be adding to our housing capacity or maintain it at a constant level.
Another question on the bonding, what is the term of the bonds?
We'll be looking at a forty-year term.
And in LSU, are we obligated for the bonds?
Yeah, we will be guaranteed the occupancy of the residence halls to cover the debt service.
And is this the same arrangement as on Nicholson Gateway?
Yes.
Have it changed?
Yes, it's, we're following the same template.
Well, I'd like to just request the opportunity to look at the financing and the agreement package. I'm not asking that today, but it would be.
Sure, we'll be happy as we're, as we're, those are still in trend, you know, in development, but when we get to a point where the numbers are fairly final, we'll be, we'll share that with, certainly share that with the board.
Dan, do you use the same private for all of this Nicholson Gateway, or would you go through the bid process?
No, we're using the same, the same team.
Any other questions?
Just point out that this, because we've added the Nicholson project, this is the first year, this past year is the first year, we've been able to require freshmen to live on campus. And we're only one of three SEC Southeastern Conference schools that could, did not have the capacity to require that. And now we have a lot more upper-class, especially with Nicholson, which is primarily upper-class facilities for housing for students who want to stay on campus their whole time here.
Ken, can you talk about, in other words, how this is going? What's the occupancy there, or are kids staying there? What, how's it going?
Sure, Dan.
Sir, Nicholson Gateway, again, we began last year, which was our first year, at occupancy was about eighty percent, which is what we had forecast. For next year, we're currently looking at about ninety-three or ninety-four percent occupancy, which is very healthy.
I have another question. By our approval this today, is that the final approval from the board for this project, or will you come back at any point?
Yes, this will be the final approval.
When to anticipate that this authorizes the president to sign the agreements? When do you anticipate those would be prepared for signature?
September is when the financing documents will be ready to finalize. That's when the financial close is.
Are there any agreements in between now and then that?
Just the agreements are, they're part of the doc, that are part of the documentation that was provided with the, with this, which, again, those are being, those are being finalized as well.
And the timing is, timing certainly, when you're opening residence halls is imperative, because students have to place their deposits down, and you've got to be open on the first day. And that's very different than some of the apartment complexes that have gone up, and then they've sent notices out to the students who have already signed leases, that you won't be able to get in for a month. And then we've had to find the students' hotel rooms to put the, they help pay for them, but we've had to find, relocate, or move the students into hotel rooms, because the private contractors on the outskirts of campus haven't met their obligation to be open when the students are ready to move in. So it's imperative, and that's why the Nicholson project, we were open and ready to roll August first, and these things have to hit on the money. And we need to have good, good, timely construction firms that know exactly what's at stake. A three-month delay means that we're, we've displaced hundreds of students for god knows how long, and then we've got to find them another place, and that may be off-campus in a hotel room. And what a miserable experience that would be, to have to relocate in the middle of a semester when it does open up.
The other part of this is, isn't it been proven over time, Stacy and King, that students, when they enter and they live on campus, they perform better academically as well and have greater success rates?
Yes, research is very consistent, that students perform better, they live on campus as opposed to off-campus.
Retention's better, graduation's better, and they're more likely to get a campus job, which is a twenty, up to twenty hours. But having a campus job also is better retention for students having to go off-campus to find jobs and work as well.
Dan, can I ask a question? I see Don Lawhorn, our Director of Diversity Supplier Program. I know we talked about Greenhouse District project. I guess, is this the same as the Greenhouse District project?
Yes, this is.
So this, I got it. So all phases of it?
Yes.
Will be adhered to the diversity?
Yes, 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 and we've, yes.
Additionally, we have a number of state approvals that have to happen after the board approval, so, and that's the main reason it is on the agenda for today, because all of those approvals have to happen subsequent to this approval to meet the September deadline for closing documents.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, I don't want to gloss over too quickly the comments that were made by the presenters earlier, that the diversity language is included in the documents on the front end. I think that's extremely significant as we move forward to diversify the procurement system here, and the ripple effects of that will be substantial. So I want to tip my hat to the president, to Dan and his staff. We'll see the effects of that for years to come. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Our motion to accept.
So moved.
Moved to second. Any objections? Thank you. Next item?
Thank you. Item five is a request from LSU A&amp;M to approve construction of a new sorority house by Kappa Kappa Gamma. The existing sorority house for Kappa Kappa Gamma was constructed in the late sixties and no longer meets their needs. They've raised capital funds and identified financing to demolish their existing house and construct a new one on the same site, at a total projected cost of approximately nine-point-seven million dollars. The board has already approved the schematic design in the September eighteen meeting. Construction is expected to start at the end of the current semester, with the new house projected to open in time for fall 2020.
Motion to accept.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Damp second, by Mr. Brown. Any objections? Okay, thank you. Final item, Mr. Lombardo?
Item six is a request from LSU Health Sciences Center, New Orleans, to approve execution of a lease agreement between the LSU Board of Supervisors and the LSU Health Foundation, New Orleans, for the Butterworth and Hutchinson Buildings. Health Sciences Center proposes that the Board of Supervisors enter into a lease agreement as part of the larger old charity hospital repurposing process. The Real Estate and Property Foundation entered into a competitive process for developer and adaptive reuse of the former charity. The entity, Fifteen Thirty-two Tulane Partners, was awarded the contract, and that entity is in need of office space reasonably close to the charity hospital facilities for its work in repurposing charity. Foundation proposes that the LSU Board lease the Butterworth and Hutchinson Building to the foundation. The foundation will then sublease the two buildings to Fifteen Thirty-two Tulane Partners for a period of five years during the period that the developer will be renovating and repurposing charity.
Chancellor, Oliver, you would like to speak on that one?
Thank you. Let me make a comment first. Dan, I had earlier talked a bit about the public-private partnerships, and I've had the opportunity to be involved in two of these specifically, and I can emphasize how valuable that has been. One of the entities we were looking to do is a housing project on our dental campus. We arranged an agreement with the Real Estate Property Foundation, LSU, and they went through the process of vetting this out. We actually came to the end of this, after all the studies had been done, it did not make financial sense for me to agree to that. I had to pay a little money back for the expenses that the foundation incurred, but it saved me several million in the long run, and we found another way to do it. So the idea of having the opportunity to do a public-private partnership relationship is very helpful. Similarly, several years ago, we went through agonizing process to get somebody to pick up renovations of charity hospital. That floundered. Again, with this project for charity hospital now, we are in the process, after going through a public-private partnership with the, again, the Real Estate Property Foundation, LSU. And a very broad-based study was done. They brought in the National Property.
JLL.
Yeah, and a developer, and so we now have that getting ready to go underway. It's been a valuable asset. JLL, who's going to redo a charity hospital, would like to lease the spaces, the buildings across the street from charity hospitals, so they can use it as staging for their architectural work and so forth that they're doing. They actually wanted it for thirty years. I did not like the idea of tying up those buildings for thirty years, because what I see with charity being redeveloped, there's virtually no parking around there. So I think we have an opportunity to take the buildings back in five years, and I'll do another public-private partnership to have them torn down and build a high-rise parking garage, because there'll be the business need for this across the street. So the whole enterprise is working very well together.
Thank you. Any questions, Steve? Parking garages in New Orleans are automatic cash flow. It's a good, that's a very good idea. Mr. Brown, any comments? Okay, it's their motion to accept. So moved by Mr. Brown, second. By Mr. Storns. Any objections? Thank you very much, Mr. Lombardo.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the business of the Property and Facilities Committee. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Woods, Mrs. Jones, would you please convene the Athletic Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Griffith, please call roll.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Damp?
Damp.
Mr. Starnes?
Here.
Mr. Woods?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a form.
Thanks, Nicole. Before we start, I'd like to acknowledge the outstanding achievements of our spring sports. We have a number of nationally-ranked programs, including men's track, which is ranked second in the country. Women's track is ranked eighth. Baseball is ninth. Softball is seventh. Beach volleyball is fourth in the country. Men's golf is tenth in the nation, and the women's golf team was just awarded an NCAA regional berth. The gymnastics team finished national runners-up after making their thirtieth NCAA championship berth and earning their seventh consecutive NCAA regional title, and Coach Bro is closing in on her eight-hundredth win. We are very proud of our Tigers. We're also proud of Devin White, who was drafted last night, fifth in the first round by the Tampa Bay Buccaneers. At this time, I'll ask Tom Skinner to present the first item on the athletics agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I believe the first item on the agenda is the Woodard Contract. So this has received a fair amount of attention. It probably doesn't need belaboring, but the university, led by the board chair and the president, and many others, have attracted Scott Woodard to come over from Texas A&amp;M to serve as our athletic director. You have in front of you the details, it's called a term sheet rather than a full contract. The full contract will be written up at a later date. We're working on that currently. It lays out the terms. Significantly, the base salary, the salary paid by the university itself remains the same as previous athletic directors, Dr. Olivas, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. The rest will be made up from an affiliated foundation. There are also certain milestone bonuses in the contract, based on, one for relocation and assigning bonus, and the other two for completing certain lengths of the contract. More than open to taking questions if anybody has them.
I don't, I don't have this time sheet, a little sheet. Does anybody have?
I don't have it.
I don't have it.
All right. Term sheet didn't make it into the packet. Sorry about that. The bottom line is.
Newspaper gets stuff before us.
Let me summarize it for you. The bottom line is that in, for coming over, Scott will receive a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar relocation slash signing bonus for the, he has a six-year deal, six-year contract. First two years of the contract are at one-point-one million dollars a year. Years three and four are at one-point-three approximately.
Years three and four are at 1.3 approximately. Years five and six are at 1.5. In year five, he would receive a $250,000 retention bonus. In year six, upon completion of his contract, he would receive a $500,000 completion bonus. Again, only $525,000 of the annual salary or compensation is paid for with state funds, university funds.
Is that the initial year, or in the following years will that increase for the Board?
The $525,000, same all the way through, the six-year term.
Okay, and there are other sources that are going to make up that difference?
Correct.
What are those other sources?
It'll be some combination of TV revenues and/or funds from affiliated entities. In the past, TAF has funded some of these contracts. I do want to say for the benefit of the members that the term sheet and information about this is included in the board packet material.
Yeah, well, a little poop sheet though wasn't on here.
It's a one-page summary of the deal.
Yeah, I understand. It just wasn't in any of our folder here with all the stuff that we just went through. Just that wasn't in here.
Okay, it's in, it's in the board's packet.
Amongst 800 pages, I got it of this, and we got a summary of some of the stuff we already went over, but that was not in this little folder.
All right. Are there any other, are there any other questions?
I do want to say two things. One, it was in the voluminous materials. Agenda circulated, so if there's interest in an item, the board members are certainly able to go through the board materials. The other thing I want to say before we leave this is I do want to acknowledge the hard work of our Athletics Committee Chair, Valencia Jones, and the General Counsel, and the President in bringing this deal to fruition. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it.
Wait, I'd like to do that, but I want to ask one question. On Mr. Aliva's deal, what is, what is more of that? I didn't get any of that information other than what I read in the newspaper.
What is what now?
What is Mr. Aliva's term? Is he staying for two years to the end of the contract? Is it, I've heard through the grapevine it might be end of June. I just want somebody to answer that.
King, can you?
King, can you elaborate on that?
Sure, and I think it's a, I will say, obviously, Mr. Aliva works for the President, reports to the President, and, you know, we do give the President full authority and confidence of the board to shape his staff the way he sees fit and to do the best business for the university. So if that has all been decided, and if, King, you're in a position to talk about those personnel moves, that would be fine, but if this is a personnel decision that you alone have the authority to make and it's not yet finalized, I certainly understand that too. Feel free to comment as you see fit. Let me defer to Tom since we've been in conversations this past week, right up until Wednesday morning with Joe and a few. Yeah, the initial, now, some of the terms that came out initially in the media will not be part of the final deal. We're in the process of finalizing his arrangements right now. I would expect that it actually won't require board action when it comes down to.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, yeah. We're working. It's in the middle of being negotiated. I certainly don't want to, I don't think anybody wants to jeopardize our legal position. Yeah, and I think, I think everyone will be satisfied with the outcome when it, when it comes about.
Yeah, just, I mean, we learn more from the paper. Advocate knows more than I do.
This was a, yes, sir, I sometimes.
And I don't know if it was in the paper accurately if Joe moved him to head of donor relations, but I didn't know if this was some kind of, I don't, I didn't know he had those talents.
We're, as I said, I think the board as a whole and individually, you all be satisfied at the. It was never head of donor relations.
Oh, that was just the papers.
Papers can get.
I don't trust the papers either, but I'm just saying I sort of read.
It was never head of donor relations, but it was special assistant because, to the President, and we're working out the details of that and the duration of that as, within the last couple of days. So he'll be with us for a little bit, and, and so we're working through those details exactly right now.
I'd just ask for us maybe to get it before the paper because people tell, call me about stuff before. Just, I just would like that as courtesy as a board member.
Okay, thank you all for those comments. Is there any, are there any other questions about the item before us?
Do you need a motion?
I've got something, not about the, not about the salary and all of that stuff. The thing that really bothers me about what we do, and I don't know how you control that or you stop that information. The day before the board meeting, you read about everything that we're going to do like it's already been done, you know? I mean, you've got salaries, you've got other things that are moving, not just on this issue, but it gets, it's, it's like we've already done it and the paper picks it up. I don't know how you keep that information to stay until we actually do so, and that really bothers me, and I think, I don't know how you fix that problem or fix it, but it's, I know you have to release stuff and talk about what you're going to bring to the board, but it, all of these things, if you read the paper a few days ago or yesterday or whatever it was, we had already acted and done all of the things that we're doing, and that's, that really puts us in a bad light, in my view, anyway.
Yeah, I think the, we do, as you say, have to release the materials publicly because the public's entitled to all the information we have. I think we're all frustrated whenever something is reported in the media before we have a chance to find out about it, but the reality is, you know, sometimes the media may report that something's done when it's not. They may see something in our materials and think we voted on it, and we haven't. I suspect in this particular situation, because the Will Wade, I mean, excuse me, the Scott Woodward information was in the packet of materials, which rightfully was released to the public, the media was able to certainly see what we were planning to do today. Maybe the media misreported that it had already been done, but certainly there was no action that could be taken until the board approved it, at least on this issue. So I do think, you know, we'll continue to say the President and the staff do a good job of trying to stay ahead of everything, but, you know, it is a large system, and information does tend to make its way to the outside, and we all appreciate the work you do in trying to keep us informed, and we just ask that we continue to try to stay ahead of the, of the information flow, understanding that it's, it's difficult, but it is, but it is necessary, and we're all frustrated with these kinds of.
And this just did not start. It's been going on for years.
Absolutely.
And, you know, if they would portray it in the media as these items are going to be brought to the board for them to analyze, look at, up or down or whatever, but when you read it, that this is all, if you read it and believe what's in there, it's already been done, and I get calls and say, whoa, what are y'all doing? We hadn't acted on anything yet.
Right.
I have to say, I have never been part of a private or a public institution that doesn't have this issue from governors' offices, the President of the United States right now and his own staff, including his own General Counsel. So unfortunately, it's, it's the effectiveness with which a free media cultivates sources, and sometimes those sources give them incorrect information, and sometimes they give them pretty decent information, but when you're trying to run an enterprise, it's really hard, and we all have to remember at the same time, the media's pretty darn good about finding sources, so we'll all keep trying.
And they do. Out of one thing, though, I guess I'm a little irritated at it, understanding the President has, you know, done great things for the university, and, but this press release that goes out to the press comes from LSU, and this is what it says. "LSU and Vice Chancellor, Director of Athletics, Joe Aliva, today announced he is stepping down from his current position and is transitioning to a new role as Special Assistant to the President for Donor Relations." I don't know if the press reported that wrong or we reported it wrong, but those press releases are supposed to come to the committee to just be reviewed before they go out. That's just my point, so, thank you. I know it would take up too much time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments about the matter regarding the employment contract for our new Athletic Director, Scott Woodward? Any comments?
Do you intend a motion to approve?
Thank you.
I will.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, without objection, it is approved. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors and as the Chair of the Athletic Committee, I want to express how excited we are to welcome Scott Woodward back home to LSU as our Athletic Director. As a native of Baton Rouge and a graduate of LSU, Mr. Woodward knows who we are, and most importantly, he understands what we can accomplish when we're all heading in the same direction together. LSU Athletics is one of the top departments in the nation, and we're looking forward to even greater things under Mr. Woodward's leadership. Tom, would you please present the next item consideration?
This next item, Madam Chairman, is a First Amendment to the Employment Agreement of Men's Basketball Coach Will Wade. I believe that also was in your packet. This document, this amendment, was a result of discussions that took place with Coach and his representatives over the course of the past 30 to 45 days as we've gone through the process of interviewing Coach, and he agreed to this result.
Are there any questions regarding this matter?
Moved, item.
Second.
All right, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any objection? All right, the motion carries. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Werner, who is a longtime supporter and fan of gymnastics, who's going to elaborate on the success of the gymnastics scene.
Thank you, Ms. Jones and Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure today to honor and welcome the LSU gymnastics team led by Coach DeeDee Bro and Senior Sarah Finnegan. If I could ask you all to come to the podium, please. Mr. Chairman, my fellow board members, among the list of accomplishments of the team members of the LSU gymnastics squad is the winning of their third straight SEC title. They are the current NCAA runners-up for our national gymnastics competition. Seven gymnasts have earned All-American honors. Sarah Finnegan, Kennedy Edney, McKenna Kelly, Lexi Priestman, Reagan Campbell, Juliana Cannavilla, and Ruby Harold. Kennedy Edney was the individual national champion in vault at the most recent competition. Lexi Priestman was named to the SEC Community Service Team, having completed 70 hours of service, and I have to say, on behalf of Ms. Priestman and the entire team, they went above and beyond in showing their character and integrity in befriending a wonderful young woman who lost her battle with cancer, but she, her, her beautiful personality and her family were brought to the forefront of our attention. They're a wonderful Louisiana family, and the entire gymnastics team embraced Gracie, and we are all blessed by having that experience of getting to know her through you all and their service with her. Ms. Finnegan, who is with us today, won the SEC All-Around Title and is the SEC Gymnast of the Year, one of only three people to earn this honor in back-to-back years. She's the Central Region Gymnast of the Year, the individual national champion, current national champion in bars, and she holds that title for two seasons, and she is one of four finalists, this was announced just last night, for the Honda Sports Award. Ms. Finnegan also, at the beginning of the NCAA gymnastics tournament, won the AAI Award, which in the gymnastics world is equivalent to the Heisman Trophy. So I wanted to bring Ms. Finnegan and Coach Bro here today because to recognize all the accomplishments, not only of you, Ms. Finnegan, but of the entire team, because every time I hear you speak, you talk about that this is a team effort. No accomplishment you achieved was done without all your teammates, and we are so thankful that you could be with us today. We know this is the start of finals. You're about to graduate and leave us, and we wanted to take this opportunity today to congratulate you and Coach Bro on the immense success, the wonderful example you are and how you bring, as we talk about sports as the front porch to our university, you all have certainly done a tremendous job in opening the door in the gymnastics world on national television and across the country to all the talent we have at LSU. DeeDee, you are a legend around here. We always hear you on national TV. Bart Connor loves to talk about you as the Dean of the coaches and certainly in the SEC and here at LSU. So thank you both for taking the time to come. Mr. Chairman, please help me welcome Ms. Finnegan and Coach DeeDee Bro.
Sarah is right now in the throes of final exams, preparing to hopefully get accepted into therapy school in New Orleans. I'm looking at a few of the board members that I have pressed to help me in that quest, but I know many of you personally, and I can only say one thing, why can't I ever say one thing? But I will say, this team truly does represent the heart of LSU. Everything they do, they do for the spirit of LSU and for the glory of their flagship university. It's a team. It's a total effort, all members. I'm sorry that the whole team couldn't be here, but it's always an honor. Mary, you were there at the championships. Many of you have been to our competitions, came to regionals, came to regionals. I just can't say enough about how much I love LSU. I love the state of Louisiana, and everything we do, everything that this body does to make LSU better is what we're all about. So thank you very much, and go Tigers. I want Sarah to say a few words, just so you can kind of get a feel for her heart.
Oh. That's on the spot. I didn't know, I was speaking. Yeah, thank you so much. I mean, this, these past four years have been an incredible journey here. I'm so honored, so blessed to be a part of this amazing program. I can't say enough about DeeDee. I mean, she's built this program from the ground up, and we've just continued to get better, continued to grow, continue to earn accolades and awards, and I'm just so excited for this program. I'm so excited for what's in store for them because a national championship is definitely in the books, but I'm, I just can't say how honored and how blessed I am to be a part of this university because it literally has been the best four years of my life, and I'm just so thankful for LSU to helping me grow as a person, grow as a student, grow as an athlete, and I just, I just am so honored. So, thank you.
Told you.
Coach, you are a tremendous ambassador for the university. Thank you for all you do. Your gymnasts are tremendous. I was watching the Today Show this week, and they were, they talked about the team, and so y'all are not only excelling in your, in competition, but you are excelling at being ambassadors for the university, and it all starts with you, Coach, so thank you for everything.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all for that. I will, this actually concludes the business of the Athletic Committee, Mr. Chairman. I'll accept a motion to conclude.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? Without objection, the committee is adjourned. Mr. Chairman, the Athletics Committee has concluded.
Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude our morning meeting, committee meetings, and now I will call the full Board of Supervisors back to order. Ms. Griffith, would you please call the roll again?
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Werner? Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Armenter?
Here.
Mr. Blossman?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Sharanland?
Mr. Dampf?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Lockett?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Starnes? Mr. Woods?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough.
Mr. Chairman, I request for the full meeting.
Thank you. We will now take up approval of the minutes of the board meeting held on March 20th to 2019. They were previously provided to you. I don't know if Mr. Blossman read them yet.
I hadn't, I wasn't at the meeting.
Are there any questions? Move, approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any opposition? Without opposition, the minutes are approved. It's time for the Staff Advisor and Faculty Advisor Reports. We'll start with Ms. Tammy Milliken from the Staff Advisors.
It is with great excitement that I provide an update on the status of the two Staff Senate Resolutions that I reported on last month. Protocol for the death of an LSU employee. I met this month with Ryan Landry from Academic Affairs and Mimi I met this month with Ryan Landry from Academic Affairs and Mimi Singer Lee from HRM to review a draft of this policy they prepared, along with a document with resources and a checklist to move a department or college through the business and personal issues that must be addressed when an LSU employee passes away. We edited the document during this meeting and it is now being reviewed by the General Counsel's Office. This policy and resource checklist will be hugely beneficial after the loss of a staff or faculty member and also provides a protocol for honoring the member of an LSU employee who passes away during service to the university. We greatly appreciate the efforts of Ryan and Mimi in researching and creating these documents. Our second resolution addressed the establishment of guidelines for executive-level search committees. This resolution was passed due to concern that there was not always Staff Senate representation on search committees for critical hires. On Monday, I received a draft of a new finance and administration standard operating procedure to establish those guidelines to review, and I'm pleased to say that those guidelines, that document, not only establishes proper representation for Staff Senate, but also ensures that there is representation from underrepresented groups on campus, as well as the Office of Diversity. Thanks so much to Dan LaZelle and to Mimi and her HRM staff for preparing this document. Both of these documents further our goal of making LSU one of the best workplaces in Louisiana. I would also like to report to you that Staff Senate recently held two receptions to welcome staff members who joined LSU this year. Both receptions were well-attended and we greatly appreciate Provost Haney, Senior Vice Provost Cassidy, and Vice Provost Rivera for attending and speaking at both of those events. We have also been celebrating Staff Appreciation Week on campus this week, with perks from businesses around campus offering all kinds of coupons and stuff to staff, and departments showing their appreciation for staff in several ways. Staff Senate was excited to host our annual Staff Appreciation Night at Alex Box. This tailgate event is growing every year, and this year, Campus Federal cooked and served more than 300 bowls of jambalaya, and Staff Senate provided cookie cakes, soft drinks, and staff appreciation t-shirts to staff members from across campus and at all levels. With this turnout, we're definitely going to need more t-shirts next year. Staff members were also given a free ticket to the game and got to cheer on our Tigers as they defeated Lamar. I'd like to thank President Alexander for stopping by, as he does every year as well. Staff volunteers are gearing up to celebrate commencement with our graduates and their families by handing out water bottles. We handed out 13,000 bottles of water last year, with a goal of 15,000 this year. We provide information to our guests, take pictures for family and friends, and provide golf cart rides to the venues for our elderly or Mobility Challenge guests. And finally, I've sent an email to the La Tech University Council, which is a combined faculty and staff senate, offering our support to the students, staff, and faculty of the university as they recover from the deaths in their community and the damage to their town and campus. We are working on putting together some resources to bring to them. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And this time, we'll have our Faculty Advisors report from Dr. Ken McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, President Alexander, members of the board. It's always a pleasure to be here. I want to start off by saying, we're going to be bittersweet to see Stuart change his purple jacket for a Purple Road robe here in a couple of weeks, but we do wish him the best as he does leave us and go on to hopefully bigger and better things. I don't really have prepared statements, except to say, what Governor Edwards said is probably, we're on the cusp of being great. And in that regard, I want to point out some specific things that we at LSU are doing. Some are coming to fruition very fast, others will take more time. You've heard about the master plan and building more residence halls on campus. We have to offer the same opportunities for students to engage socially as they do academically. So in that aspect, we want to have every student, when they graduate from LSU, to be the same as our gym, our graduating gymnasts, that they've been a part of the team and they're fully prepared to go out and really change the world. That's our goal, and so in that regard, we're hitting on what I would say, all cylinders as much as we have in my long tenure here at LSU. In orientation, we're changing orientation for the freshman students, not only to address the fact that, yes, they're probably going to be the biggest and most diverse again, but how do we actually get them to understand that there is a balance between academics and their social activities? They're going to be Tigers, no doubt about that, but we want them to be so fully prepared academically that we can challenge the best graduates from across the country with those students. We've just hired, it was announced, as most of you are aware, an outstanding Vice President for Student Affairs. Between what we do with orientation and the fact that we keep those students engaged, they're going to be on campus, that's an exciting thing. But don't forget about the other mission of our university. We want to be the premier, not one, but the premier research institution in the South, and so we're searching right now for Vice Presidents of Research and Economic Development. That is so exciting to me as a faculty member conducting research, that I can't express in words just what this importance will be, because we've got four outstanding candidates that we're bringing to campus. Faculty Senate has just approved election of the Graduate Council. That will move our graduate education forward, and in that regard, the Graduate Schools had consultants, I think they're finishing up this morning, to tell us how we can improve our graduate education. So hopefully, within two or three years, we will have such a comprehensive approach to academics, research, and service, that we will indeed not think of ourselves as the premier university. We will be the premier research one and flagship institution. So I thank you very much for your time, I thank you for your leadership, but please don't forget, faculty and staff are some of the glue that holds all this together. We're the backbone of the university, and so we appreciate the support of our administrators. We appreciate that our mission is to educate students, but please don't forget about us and all of these initiatives that we have. So I thank you very much, and I would be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Professor McMillan, thank you for, we know that the reins are being handed over, and the fact that you have worked so well with us, when you have issues and the Faculty Senate has issues, you've been able to sit down with us and we've been able to work with you on so many fronts, and we couldn't have done that without your openness and your willingness to just bring us those concerns and let us tackle them the best way possible. That is the most satisfactory way possible for our faculty, our campus, our students. But without your pushing the envelope on a lot of these important issues, we never would have gotten there on behalf of our faculty. So just thank you for all you've done.
Thank you for those kind words, and I was remiss in not apologizing first for probably stealing some of your thunder later in your report. Thank you.
I just, I also want to say thank you on behalf of the students, because you've truly been a connector with all community fronts, with staff, Tammy nodding her head, and students, and keeping us all on the same page. So when those decisions are being made, we're very aware of what's going on. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. We're looking forward to continuing the relationship we've had with your staff, with William and Taylor, and also then with Rachel as she assumes the role of Staff Senate President. Yes, we're all in this together and headed in the right direction. So it's, it's an exciting time to be a part of LSU.
Thank you. Dr. Alexander, would you please provide the President's report?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, and thank you once again, Tammy and Ken, for your leadership and your collaboration. I'd like to thank everyone for LSU Day at the Capitol, and certainly the staff that put on probably what I would consider the best LSU Day at the Capitol. Involved students, faculty, staff, doctors, coaches, it involved the entire LSU family, our chancellors, and it really was a great, great success, the whole day long. And I think we've got a few pictures of it for those that weren't able to attend, but just to show, just a couple shots of what occurred at LSU Day.
Thank you.
Well, thank you again for everybody that made this such a big success. We also had another big day, for those that were able to attend. It was the Capitol Campaign Kickoff, where 800 people of our biggest donors and some that will be our biggest donors, came from all over the United States, and we had an amazing transformation of what is the parade ground into a football-field-sized tent and celebration center. And just to show those that haven't had an opportunity to see what, what really turned into a two-day celebration of where we're headed. And, and once, you can go back on that, and once again, the, that celebration really was a kickoff and a celebration of a Capitol Campaign that's been underway. It was the public announcement, and currently, we're looking at, we're hitting about $680 million of our $1.5 billion campaign. We've, we've moved up quite a bit just since that announcement of the Capitol Campaign. We're way ahead of track on this Capitol Campaign, and we appreciate the work of all the chancellors and all the foundations that are unified and working together on this important endeavor, significantly transformative endeavor, and ambitious endeavor, that moves us closer and closer every single day to the $1.5 billion goal that we have set. I'd also like to, once again, congratulate our team, our gymnastics team, for what great ambassadors, as, as we just, just, just saw. Also announcing the hiring of the Vice President of Student Life, as, as was just mentioned, Dr. Jeremy Shin, who is former Associate Vice President of the Division of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management of Boise State University. He has two decades of administrative experience in student leadership, student government, career services, civic engagement, Greek affairs, residential life, and career services, and just among the many areas of his expertise. And he's coming from Boise State, and he has given us a reassurance that our intermural fields will not turn blue. The announcement of the Vice President of Research and Economic Development will be coming certainly before this, our next meeting, but probably within the next week. And our commencement speaker for the main campus, the main commencement speaker is going to be Professor Gabriella Gonzalez, Professor of Physics and Astronomy, our very own Gabriella Gonzalez. Just to share with you some of her recent honors, just in the last two years, of what she has been able to achieve. There is only one SEC Professor of the Year selected, and Gabriella Gonzalez was selected as the SEC Professor of the Year. Since this program began nearly ten years ago, LSU is the only university to have two professors selected as the, the SEC President, or Professor of the Year, which is Isaiah Warner, two years ago, and now Gabriella Gonzalez. But just a couple, let me just highlight a couple things that Gabriella probably would never tell you, and why she is our commencement speaker. She just received an honorary Doctor of Science from Glasgow University. In 2018, the Southeast University's Research Association gave her the Distinguished Scientist Award. In 2017, she became a Fellow at the Canadian Institute for Advanced Research. In 2017, she got an honorary doctorate from the National University of Cordoba in Argentina. 2017, she was a selected member of the most prestigious U.S. National Academies of Sciences, which is indeed rare among our professors and all professors nationwide. 2017, she was selected Fellow of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. 2017, she won the Einstein Medal awarded by the Albert Einstein Society in Born, Switzerland. 2017, the U.S. National Academies of Sciences gave her the, the Award for Scientific Discovery. And she's a female scientist, and all of those things we thought would be great to highlight to our graduates and to our audiences, and what a great accomplishment, and she is on a roll. She is on a roll internationally. The Governor mentioned the state stabilization of the budget, and he mentioned a couple things I wanted to highlight, which we showed to the House Appropriations, so they know where our starting point is. And we were hammered for so long, we are still digging our way out of a hole. And if you go to the first slide, what you're looking at is the SREB, our Southern Regional States. This is tuition and fees and state appropriations, the total amount of money we have to spend on our students. And as you can see, we are at the bottom of the SREB average, which is really a tribute to what I'm going to say at the end to our faculty and staff on what we've been able to accomplish. The Governor wants to help us get from there back to where we were, but this is the starting point going into this legislative session, that we were reminding them that zero funding is not full funding. In fact, zero funding, we have to handle mandatory costs, is still a cut. So we have to get on the positive side of the funding, when the national average is 3, 3.8% increase, and the Governor has given us his assurance that he will help us get there, but we certainly need the help of the House and the Senate to move that needle back to where it is. The next slide, please. Put it in a national context, this is a little hard to see, but our budget, our, our spending level per student ranked us 41st, 41st in the nation in what we have to spend per student. And go to the last slide, it's much like that one. If you go to the third from the bottom, we are the third farthest from the national average at $3,350, below the national average in our ability to have tuition fees and state appropriations used for our students, faculty, and staff. The only two states below us are California and Florida, because they have massive systems. Three thou, three million people in the California system, almost a million people in the Florida system, a big chunk of those are in the community colleges, but we are 48th in the country of where we're starting. So we are committed to working with the Governor, the Senate, and the House to realize that this is not a good starting position. And for us to be fully funded, we are a long way from Alabama, a long way from funding of Kentucky, a long way from Arkansas, Mississippi, and our per-student spending is, is that low. So I only can say this, to appreciate, and I want our faculty and staff to know, the salary increase that we were able to achieve last year was for the work that has been accomplished, despite these long odds, despite these limited resources. And every one of our institutions comparatively are in this, are in this low end of this national data that just came out three weeks ago, from the SHIO Organization or the State Higher Education Executive Officers Association. And how important it was for us, because during those bad budget years, which knocked us down to where we are, our salaries, for example, on the main campus dropped from 7th in the Southeastern Conference to 13th. With the support two years ago that this board and others were able to achieve, we went to 12th. This past year, we gained another notch, we went to 11th. We're climbing our way back up, as the Governor pointed out, and this is significant. And that's why it's important to support our faculty and staff, to make sure that we're not losing more ground, that we're keeping up and even gaining ground on our peers. We've gained two notches in two years. Let's commit ourselves to making sure that we keep gaining back to where we were, and then improve upon where we have been. And that's our doctors, that's our senior faculty, our associates, our new faculty we're recruiting, because they're weighing offers right now on where they're going to decide to go. And a lot has to do with whether we're competitive or not on salaries and benefits. So that is where we are. That's the starting point of what we're fighting for downtown right now. And just to share with you on this final note of the good news, and a real tribute to what our faculty and staff have accomplished, the, this year's graduating class, the graduating class that we are going to celebrate in two weeks, will be for the main campus, and we think it will be comparable on many of our, our other campuses, but this main campus graduating class will be the largest graduating class in total degrees in LSU's history. 7,109, we're projecting, these are projections. They're projections because finals are going on right now. We want to make sure that we don't jinx ourselves on the final exams, right Stuart? It's the most bachelor's degree LSU has ever awarded in its history. Most master's degree LSU has ever awarded in its history, 1,280. The most degrees awarded to male students, 3,257. The most female degrees, 3,852. The most Asian-American- The most Asian-American student degrees in history, 276, which is 11 percentage points higher than last year, which was our highest. Tied for the most African-American student degrees, with last year's all-time high of 772. Most degrees to Hispanic students, 420, 12 percentage points higher than our highest in the past. Most degrees to white students, 4,966, five percentage points higher than the largest year which we've had in the past. Most degrees in LSU history of top students, STEM students, Pell students, Pelican Promise students, in-state students, up 5%, 5,144, and out-of-state students, 1,539, up 10% from the highest point it's ever been. This is a real tribute to what our faculty and staff are accomplishing, and it's a real tribute in a way we can show the rest of the state, those graduates are going into our economy and building our economy, and they've never been more. For every doctor that we save and keep in this state, of which 90% of the physicians are our doctors, that's worth $2 million to that local economy. This is an economic issue, and the success that we're having in building this economy starts right here. And I just wanted to use this final point to just thank our faculty and staff, despite the odds that you see, despite being $3,350 below the national average of what we're able to spend per student, we're doing pretty darn good things, and we can hold our numbers up as well as anybody, and the performance of our universities has never been stronger. So I'd like to thank our chancellors and our faculty and staff and this board for supporting the people who made this happen. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Next, we have three reports that require board approval to accept. The approval of the 2019-2020 Board of Supervisors Meeting Schedule, set by Chair-elect Mary Werner, the 2019 Second Quarter Summary, and the Third Quarter Consolidated Investment Report. Does anybody have any questions about these three reports that have previously been provided to you? Hearing no questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept these reports.
So move.
Okay, all in favor of accepting the reports, please indicate that by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion is adopted. Do we have any committee action that we need to approve? Do we take action? Nicole, do you know?
Sir, we have-
Do we have any committee actions that we-
We have no personnel actions.
No committee actions? In other words, do we need to-
Mr. Chairman, all of those were approved unanimously, and I'd like to move the whole slate of reports.
Thank you.
One more second.
Moving properly second, all in favor of accepting all of the actions from the morning, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. Those committee reports and action is accepted. The next thing is the Chairman's Report, which will be brief. I want to echo what the President said about LSU Day at the Capitol. I thought it was the best yet. I want to thank all of the staff and faculty who made it a success. I want to thank President Alexander, and I want to thank all of the board members that were able to attend and participate. I thought it was very helpful advancing our agenda of continuing to improve higher education in the state of Louisiana, particularly for LSU. I also want to extend appreciation to our President, Dr. Alexander. He just articulated all the success we're having as a university, and in his very generous and humble way, he talked about it being a tribute to the staff, and it is. He talked about it being a tribute to the faculty, and it is. But it is also a tribute to you, Dr. Alexander, and, and all of your staff, and everyone in the administration, because you set the tone, you set the agenda, you hold everyone to a standard of excellence, and we are seeing the benefits of that, the fruits of your labor, so I just want to thank you. Finally, I almost dropped a tear when he told me this in the hallway, but today is Stuart's last board meeting. Stuart, you have been incredible to work with. You're far more impressive than I was at your age here at LSU. Your leadership is incredible. Every student I encounter on campus, whether they know you or not, loves you. Your leadership has been incredible, your input and participation on this board has been far beyond your years, and I just know that you are going to go on and have a successful, great, wonderful career that makes LSU very proud, and wouldn't surprise me if, in the future, you're back on this board using that purple jacket as a member of the community, because that's just the kind of fabric you're made of. So I've really enjoyed serving with you on this, on this board. I'm hopeful that we retain your talents in the state of Louisiana, down at the LSU Med School, because we certainly want to capture your talent and keep you in our system. So everyone, please join me in giving Stuart a round of applause.
If I can just say a few words, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone. You guys have really been an integral role in my college career, and I always say LSU is extremely transformative. This place allows for students to come in and be transformed when they leave, and I feel like all of you have been a part of my educational journey, because it's not just in the classroom that you learn, it's outside, it's these experiences that you're learning how to interact and become successful in life. So I just personally want to thank all of you guys, I want to specifically thank James, Mary, President Alexander, just everyone who's been a part of this role. It's been a good journey, and I've been on a good board, and we got some, some great things accomplished, so thank you, everyone.
All right, our next meeting is May 31st, 2019, right here in Baton Rouge. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we are going to go from here, we're going to visit Laboratory School straight from here, and they have a little presentation prepared for us there, and then we'll come back to this building and have lunch after we tour the lab school. If there's no objection to adjournment, we are adjourned.